Good afternoon, special session mayor and city council meeting 1:00 PM Tuesday, November 25th, 2025, City Hall, Council Chambers. Call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Ms. Menendez, do us the honors. Thank you. Okay, discussion items. Number one, discussion by mayor and council regarding special events, facility usage, and departmental agreements, parks, rec, police, and fire.
Thank you, Mayor. In front of, in your packet, and also gave you some cheat sheet of some points on the discussions we had, and the chief, both chiefs, myself and David is representing Jessica. Jessica's not here because she had a family situation that she is dealing with, of course. And, but we believe, I think we met, actually about a month ago, wasn't it, at least? A little longer, yes. Well, in front of you is a template that we've created, and there's about sixty pages, seventy pages, that we met for about an hour and a half going over this. It was derived from three different cities, because as I found, why reinvent the wheel? We, I reached out to three different of the Saralita, Sierra Vista, and the city of Tempe. So a lot of it may be garnished, actually, from the city of Tempe, some Saralita, some Sierra Vista. What they're doing in lieu of what we're doing currently of in kind. And that would be facility requests, that would be any events, that would be anything to renting facilities, to the playing fields, to the police, fire departments, and again, of course, everything with parks and recs. With that said, the chief has already uses a program, granted, and that's a topic for another day, that we will be getting in a program that we're looking in with Work Day, I wanted to say New Day, but Work Day. But also then, the fire department hopefully will go with that program as well for now, to in case anybody needs to get police officers and/or the fire department, they can go right through there to organize, and for instance, any event, they can get four or five police officers. They pay directly, correct, through that site. That's in place right now. We're gonna obviously get that streamlined. You, if you go into other cities, you go into the Pima County, for instance, I'll use that because I'm somewhat familiar with what they do, even their little casitas, even if you want to have an event, say that, I'm just saying, our families wanted to go to the park on Western Avenue, which is Camp Little, and we wanted to use one of that, and we could rent that, but we would have to obviously then submit it to sixty days prior. If we get thirty days and nobody's using it, so be it, but first come, first served basis, that's what's in here. Pay the nominal fee of twenty-five to thirty dollars. If we wanted to have alcohol, we would get an alcohol permit, and we would then get, turn in our insurance, which would be a total for that party would be about a hundred dollars. But you're reserving that remada, you're reserving the park for your family event. Police would obviously know that they could look in there and say, okay, they, we know what's going on. They've got their event going, they've got their liquor license, and they've rented this, whatever those, that little park for that event. In essence, right now, we don't have anything, we don't have anything going. It's same with, with the soccer fields, the baseball fields, anything to do with our, what we own. It's some, some are, David, correct me if I'm wrong, please, that I believe the soccer teams, AYSO Soccer, those of you that have coached in it, and Anna, you've coached in that, correct? That whatever fees are being charged to there, well, if there are other teams that are other soccer fields, others, or even baseball teams, or anything to that effect, all fees are now going to be incorporated. They're gonna have to show proof of insurance, like just as what AS, what we require from AYSO, correct? I'm using AYSO as an example, but that's what we are looking at. The events throughout the city, the same thing, and Chief and I talked about this last event, and I don't want to step on toes on this, but we do give up a good deal of in kind to an event that the city is providing for free, yet other entities are charging for the same event, correct? So the city of Nogales, the bicycle race, that the, we provide it free, but once they get out of the city, DPS and the sheriff are charging the bicycle event for their officers. Correct? So in essence, we're giving it away where other entities are charging, including our friends at the county. So with, with everything that's going on, with what our esteemed attorney stated, and that was the first one I put on there, was that we want to make sure that the city of Nogales follows what other entities across the state are doing, municipalities, school districts. Our two school districts have been doing this since even I was there, that's twenty-five years ago. The church that was renting the auditorium for years, two years, we generated close to eight hundred thousand dollars from that. That was twenty-five years ago, and I know because I was at Nogales High School, and I was in charge of facility request for Nogales High School. And there you go. And whatever church, whatever group used the facilities in that school district, you had to pay no matter what group you were. You rented the facility, you showed proof of insurance. If you wanted the police officer or security guards, if you wanted, if he's still there, Alfredo Lopez, he paid for him for the lights. He provided the lights in the auditorium, security, everything to that effect. That was twenty-five years ago. We are one of the few entities, municipalities, that continues doing this. I won't say we're not the last, because Fulton Hill City Manager had the conversation with her at a League of Cities in, one in Tucson, that they are currently working on the same thing, because as she stated, we're still, we're still doing the handshakes and the wink winks, meaning that they're still doing whatever it is to help just go with the, with the city. Joe said at one of the meetings one time that if you get seven attorneys in a room, you're gonna get seven different opinions. Well, if we got seven attorneys in this room, I guarantee they'd all agree with this, what is stated on number one, that we are putting ourselves at a concern. We are not putting ourselves protecting the taxpayers, we're not protecting the city residents by allowing these events to go on. Mr. Doyle, I know you said one time, yes, they're great, they are good for the city and everything else, but it's just, you know, a matter of time of where do we want to go if something does happen? Because Pima County no longer sponsors their bicycle race. They had an accident, I believe, ten years ago where people got hurt, they no longer support it. They'll support it in a sense of they'll provide it just like what the county did with us or DPS. What events, what I'm looking at is, of course, Fourth of July stays with us, that's end of Christmas parade. And then anything from there on out, I would say the city manager, and I'll take this as the city manager, that I would help sponsor, we would help pay, but we would still do the insurance events, is for the Legion and the VFW events, because they are small in events, but I would still say that the, I as the city manager's office would help with those causes, because my belief is that the Legion, the VFW, and all those who have served for this city, this county, that's the respect that we still should pay tribute to them. So I would still say that those events would still, we could still help sponsor in a sense. They're not that big, there's just a couple, so that's what I would say the city manager, we would help along with those two events. Everything else follows suit. There's a lot of pages in here, there's no, we're not voting on this. I gave you the cheat sheets, you can look through it. Certainly, there's to be discussions to be made, to be had. I think it's important that we get this implemented within the next two months. Just like everything else, we're not gonna rush into it, but I did bring this to you, you have it in front of you. And with that stated, that's where I stand on this, and then it's, obviously, you guys have, it's up to you to make that decision whether or not you even want to incorporate this, but I'm doing my due diligence, I'm doing what you hired me as a city manager to make the changes for the betterment of the city and betterment of the taxpayers, and to protect the taxpayers and protect the city from any liability.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Menendez.
Okay, regarding the events that we do, that means the Cultural Arts Committee, the three events. It's the Fiesta de Mayo, Fiesta de Patrias, and Dia de los Muertos. You, these events are really necessary for the city. It's not that we want to do them. It cost us around twelve thousand dollars to do this event. So I need to know if the city is gonna be part of those events or not, because they're for the city. I mean, we don't get any credit or any profit, and it's a nonprofit organization, and they're for free. So are they gonna be included or not?
That's, again, I'm not making any decisions, Esther.
Good comment, Ms. Menendez. Anybody else have a comment? Good, your mic.
I just wanted to make a comment on behalf of our military organizations, American Legion and VFW. You know, one of the main reasons or principles behind our going out and having these ceremonies and inviting the public is to foster to, in the community with the youth patriotism that, you know, they don't forget, parents don't forget that our men in uniform are sacrificing on a daily basis so that we can enjoy the freedoms that we have, because that's what makes this country great, our military. That's one of the main backbones of it. Of course, we have our corporate state that, that again, is involved throughout the world, but it's a military that gives them the protection to be able, the same way they protect our freedoms and rights that we have as American citizens. So when we do that, we're hoping that the youth recognizes that, and, and we foster a certain respect, not only to the nation, for the community, and to all people that were, are military uniform, and of course, the veterans. So basically, that, that has a lot to do with what we do. Thank you.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes, you mentioned that two or three events from the city, Fourth of July, the Christmas parade, and which one was the other one, the Veterans Day? There's also, there's other events like the Nogu Fest, and I think this year there's gonna be a committee supporting the 250th anniversary of the, of the US. And are those events gonna be included in, are they gonna be supported by the city? And the other question was, you said that there's nonprofits that are making money from events, and we're not charging them because they're nonprofits. So does that mean that, like, for the Fiesta de Patrias, Cinco de Mayo, the Dia Muertos and that, they're not making any money? Is the city gonna continue to not sponsor, but support the events? Even, you know, they're not making any money, and, and they're events that go back in tradition for a long time, and, and the people in the community expect those, those programs. You know, there's not much to do in Nogales, you know, we only have one movie theater, and we got the recreation, baseball parks, soccer parks, and we don't want to take away things that, that bring the community together to enjoy, you know, it's a once, once a year event, you know? So I would want to discuss that a little further up. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Doyle.
Okay, from what I understood from our, our city manager, he's just bringing, I guess, those things that maybe he probably talked to legal about. And, and I think there's a lot of events that are helpful to the community, but again, I think we're gonna take it more, hopefully, in a, on a case-to-case basis of, of what are the legal responsibilities for each one? Like, you mentioned, somebody has an accident out there, to what degree is the city liable? That's going to some of them, but I think overall, we'll probably be discussing the ones that are of more value and importance to the city. In other words, is the city getting some of the value back and dollar-wise? And it's not at such high risk? Because there are some events that bring publicity to the city and bring people to the city, which our businesses, you know, thrive on, and so there's, there's, I think we just, like you said, we need to discuss each time something comes up and see what route we're gonna take once we get together with legal and, and voice out all our, all the differences, the pros and cons, I guess. So I think like, I think, I like what you're saying, because I think we're being too liberal right now, and we need to kind of fine-tune a little more some of these events. But like Mrs. Lopez said, those events have been, they help so much to the community, not only in the cultural side, but also they bring a lot of people, and every time they're, they're growing and bringing more and more people to our community, which, you know, they leave, they leave those registers ringing, and, and that's what we want to, if we can help our local businesses, that's one way we can do it. So I think we're doing okay as far as, on most of them, but there's probably some that we can kind of say, no, we can't support this for this reason or that reason, but I think most, most of them are okay.
Thank you, Professor. Go ahead, Ms. O'Neal.
Mr. Kramer, thank you for, for doing this. I, I think this brings also equality to everyone. You know, we have people that want to have soccer leagues, they have softball leagues, and, and so the biggest complaint has been here by other people is that, that the playing field literally is not the same. So my question is to you today is, what is the difference, like, what deal is there right now with the, with the Little League versus other big cities? Is it, is it the same? Is it not the same? Is it, do we have, do we share some common things on how we handle Little League?
I think that would be a question for Parks and Recs, but I'll do the best I can to answer your question. Is whether or not you're asking me, is there a equity across Little League ASYO? If we had swim leagues, if we had all that? I think what the answer would be is, whatever one does, if they pay and they have their liability insurance, and they get the field times at this time, then it should be for two, it should be three, it should be across the board. Is that happening right now?
I don't think it's not.
It's not. So with that said, and that was a discussion we had in there when Jessica was here, we discussed that as well. What do, does it with flag football, with anything that would be going on with those fields? Again, you treat everybody equitable, and everybody has to be held to the same standard. Everybody has to show proof of insurance, everyone has to follow the protocol of this is the time allotted for your fields. So apparently, it's not, so we want to make sure that we are addressing that. Again, protecting the city in liability causes, that's one of my concerns. Not so much of trying to charge over, overcharge, because that's not the point, but it is certainly important that everyone follows to the same parameters of everything that we set forward in here as far as, yes, you have a league, yes, you follow it, this one, this one. I think it's also important to address is that all the fields, all the playing, everything else, it belongs to the city. So the city has final say in anything that goes on to that with myself and/or Parks and Recs. We want to ensure that it's equitable and it's used. I mean, we could have teams that come from Saralita that said, you know what, we had, our fields were booked, and they find, they called down here and find out that the Little League field's available on Saturday and Sunday? We'd book a tournament, sure, they could use it, they follow the parameters of it. That's what we kind of want to do too. Going on what you just said then, Mr. Doyle, we opened it up for outsiders to come in and maybe spend some money in town. But it's got to be equitable that way too. So I think that's what we're looking, and that's what we're driving to.
Do you have something, Ms. Barra?
Well, I'm just looking at the cheat sheet, and it does make sense. We do need to move forward with Nogales. We can't stay behind, and I think it's only right that we have some sort of agreements in the use of our parks and everything involved in this. I really, I really see us having to move forward with this.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll save my ten cents. Little League, because I know where it's going, Little League has always basically worked in and, and with the Parks and Rec on all its programming, practices, games, tournaments, everything. Is that right, Mr. Oropessa? We have brought in thousands of dollars in tournaments with rent, with bed tags, with hotels, with, you know, people visiting in, in our district, our state, and our regional tournament. And the city has always, ever since I could remember, has always supported Little League. Just like it's supported the, you know, the festivals. I think our community is, is, is looking forward to all these festivals and these leagues being around. Now, Little League charges, I know, because I'm part of the board, once registration per year. I know AYSO charges two, sometimes three per year. I don't control AYSO. I know Little League, through Little League, Little League gives its insurance policy covered through all the fields that we use, not just the cities, the schools, even Damon Park up in Rio Rico, even the Tuba Park. All those fields, if our teams are practicing there, are covered through our Little League insurance, if something happens there. You know, as far as, I know on the bicycle race, Circle of Peace gives during, an insurance plan for the bike race. You know, I'm not sure how Tucson would handle it, how they handled it, if Tucson was the one, the city of Tucson was the one running the race, that's different from how it's being done right here. But I think our, our community votes for us to support them and being able to have all these functions. You know, I think it's something that, yeah, there might be some tweaking, but let me tell you, I don't think we, we should be eliminating and not working it out. I think we should, you know, there might, like I said, there might be tweaks, but I don't think we should take away from the, from the community what we give. I think we give to the community as much as we can, and they're still, they still want more. They're always gonna want more. You know, as far as, you know, I don't see why the city is looking at, you know, being liable the Little League program is giving them an insurance policy, I think it's over two million dollars. I think that, so most of the organizations that do have tournaments and stuff like that, they have their own policies. I got no problem squaring out, we don't play on weekends, you know that, Ms. Barra, we don't play on weekends. Unless we're forced to play on weekends due to rain issues or, or, you know, events that we gotta get games in, in our weekends. I got no problem. If Parks and Rec has the ability in Mexico or, or Sararito, whoever wants to draw a tournament, we have always been open to that. We have been open to top-all tournaments. The only thing we try to protect is the fields, especially once we're getting down to regional tournaments and state tournaments, because that's, that's our bread and butter of our league to bring in, you know, Hawaii, Alaska, Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Colorado, Nevada, Northern Cal, Southern Cal, and the Arizona team, and a hosting, which only once in eleven years, Nogales has not been present. But besides that, we, that tournament is a, is a moneymaker for the city, and then basically a downtime for our community, because it's in July. You know, basically when produce is not around, you know, kids are out of school and everything. So, you know, I appreciate Mr. Kramer bringing, bringing this on, but, you know, a lot of these events also, I would bet anybody, hardly anybody thinks about them, you know, or plans them sixty days away unless it's, it's a yearly tournament or a yearly event. Other than that, you know, they start coming over here, what, Mr. Oropessa, ten days, fifteen days, twenty days? Yesterday before, for, for what, and tomorrow? You know, that's the trend of our city. Nobody, you know, we're not gonna have everybody applying sixty days. We're not gonna have everybody applying in thirty days. You know, Parks and Rec has done a magnificent job controlling the fields. I think all the coordination with fire and, and PD and all our events have been handled great. You know, if we gave our support to the Circle, to Circles of Peace, because we're in charge of for the bike race, I don't look at it as bad. Good for the city. Good for the city, we supported it. We had over five hundred riders. That's a big plus for the city. Don't look at it negative. That's a big support for the city. That's the way we should, you know, that's what we should do. Support our community, and I think that's what we're doing. Go ahead.
Mayor, I, I'm in agreement with you, like, the Circles of Peace event, the race. What, what I, where I am stuck a little bit is, why doesn't our, our neighbors, the county, why don't they also pitch in? You know, that's, that's, you know, they got paid. And that's, and I am in agreement that these events that Circles of Peace make are good for the community. I'm not, I'm not saying that, that, that's a event, it's a scrub, but why I think all of us here are stuck a little bit is, why is it that the city has to pony up everything all the time? That's all. That's the question I raise. I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but I will, I will ask that question is, why is it that the city always has to pony up everything?
And I'll say this, just so I don't get backed in a corner, because it seems like you're painting me in there. This isn't a Joel Kramer thing, this isn't a city manager thing. You asked me to come in and make changes to the city. If you go to the League of Cities, which we all go to, some of you just, you know, you attend those, go to there and ask them what they do in their cities. Find out. Don't just take my word for it here, what I'm trying to do, or what we worked on a bit. It's, and it's not all about Little League. Twenty percent is Little League, so let's not make it about Little League. It's not an attack on Little League, it's not about Little League. It's about the whole city and other events. Actually, you brought up some relative good questions. Again, it's about discussions on this. This isn't a make or break deal. This isn't black and white, we're gonna make a decision today, and this is the way it's gonna be and set. Granted, these can be tweaked. There's always, it's a living, breathing document where you make additions, you make changes. I just brought in the four, the Legion and the VFW, because that's where my heart is. Esther, you've got your heart, we could find ways of how we fund those things, those events. Certainly, it's important, but again, you bringing up a very relative, and it's important to know. Our neighbors are not contributing. So are we, that So are we that wealthy? Are we that well off in the city to provide this while others get charged and others get paid? If that's the case, that's what you guys have to decide. I'm not the decision maker here. There will be seven votes. Six right now are here, but I'm sure Ms. Montiel will be there as well. But it's not a Joel Kramer authored, this is what the city manager wants, because I know that's how it's gonna get out there. It's gonna get painted politically and it's gonna throw back on me and/or the chiefs, anybody else back behind me. But it's not that. It's what I was asked to bring forth, especially since our attorney said you could be a cause with the gift clause. So my job is to protect the city. After that, I can go like this then. And if you guys all vote to say, I'll just, that's fine. You guys are the voters. You're, like you said, the constituents. But I'm not going after any group. Let's not forget my background of sports. Trust me, Olivia will say I've watched too much sports, but I was a Little League, I was a baseball coach when I first got here. So I'm all about that. I'm all about golf. I'm all, everything about the events that you do, the events that they go on, the, everything is important. But it's gonna take one case where you're gonna, it could be not this year, next year, whatever. Why do you think Pima County stopped supporting it? Because they had an accident where three bicycles got hit by a car. We're done. Insurance is too high. Just check it out. Who, who does the Tucson rodeo? Does the city of Tucson do it? They don't. But that's a big event. George, it's been going on for 100 years. By golly, it's been going on that way forever. City of Tucson, where are they at? Ask them if they support the Fourth of July parade. Do they? They don't.
But the rodeo has their own insurance.
Okay, but the point being is there are events that are going on that are being funded by that group, just like all these other groups that you just said could be funding those events where the city is, where the city is involved.
My thing, Joe, is we're Nogales. We're not Tucson, we're not Phoenix, we're not.
Because that's the way it's always done. We'll just stick to that.
Okay.
All right, let's, you know, if you're gonna continue on that, the paradigm shift just goes oof. Because that's the way we always do it in Nogales. I've been in Nogales since 89. I know how things work. I understand. But just because that's the way we've always done it, doesn't make it right.
Go ahead, Mr. Doe.
You know, I think we're missing a big factor here, especially with programs that deal with any kind of sport or activity that involves kids, even the fiestas culturales that you have, young kids. You know, I think all these programs bring a lot of structure and organization to a kid's life. Not only that, it brings him to a social status with a community. But most of all, it keeps him out of trouble. And I think when, when he starts worrying about what the AG says, I'll challenge him. There's more value coming out. I think the chief could give us examples of figures of how expensive it is when you have gang activity and everything else that goes on, the expenses that that brings in comparison when you have structured sports and organizations that keep the kids out of trouble, keep, keep them in something progressive and productive that's gonna make them better citizens in the future. And they're the backbone of our community, the children, the kids. And I think that's where we can reach them more through these organizations while they're still young and keep them focused on how important it, the roles they play in, in participation and the community participating and supporting. And, and that's one of the things that as a city, we need to look at that. And, and then, yes, we need you to give us kind of the, the pros and cons, the counters of, uh, the value of it. So it, it's, there's a lot that we're going to be discussing probably in the future, but that's why I say if we kind of take it, not case by case, but which organizations are really bringing a benefit to the city, not only in, in dollar value, but mostly in developing our youth. But, but those are things we're, we're gonna be able to sit down and talk about. And those program, other programs that don't have the same value, well, those are the ones that, okay, we don't need to support these. But anyway, I just thought I'd say that the value of, of, of our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doe. Ms. Pera?
I just have a question. The soccer league, do they pay fees to use the fields? I don't know if it's David.
David? No, they, they charge their participants.
Right.
And obviously, uh, if you're a profit or nonprofit, we will charge them for their demanding field painting, uh, lights in itself. So if we're a profit organization, obviously, we have to pay them according to what we have in our documents. That's what we base it on, on whether they are a profit organization, which they try to use one to accommodate the other. So we have to work with them to see if they are nonprofit and then we won't. But if they're profit, then we have to charge them.
Go ahead, Royce.
Yeah, going back to the, the 60-day application requirement, uh, I think it's a good idea. You know, most of these events are, are annual events and people know what they require and how many people they expect to be at the event. So, so 60 days, well, maybe it doesn't have to be 60 days, maybe 50 days. But they need that time to, to organize, you know, the city. Sometimes, uh, teams or organizations come to the city like a couple of days before the event or whatever they want applying for. And there's a lot of things that they, that they need to bring in, like insurance, liability insurance and, uh, fill out application forms. And sometimes they think that they don't have enough time to do that. So 60 days is, is pretty good, you know. I, I know that, uh, the Christmas parade is, is starting, uh, the organizer starts planning it like in July, you know, and so they can have everything ready by, by the date of the parade. So I think that, that timeline is pretty good because otherwise, you know, we're trying to get organized and, and if we don't do it that way, you know, we just, uh, do it as a, come as you will, you know, or if you want. And, and it's not working. So I think it's a good plan to, to have that in place.
The, the 60 days is also a benefit in a sense of those that do plan ahead. If you do want to rate, that means you're reserving it 60 days ahead. It doesn't mean that the 60 days, oh, this is gonna apply to you. Let's say there's nothing reserved for 30 days or even 20 days or 10 days. But if you wanted to reserve that Camp Little Park and you already knew the plans because you're well organized, you're, let's say the Legion wanted to do it there, the VFW, you got 60 days to get that reserved. If it's not reserved and it's 10 days before they, you decide to event for a private, well, then you can do it 10 days. The 60 days is for people that plan ahead, like you just said, Mr. Barkettus. That opens that door for them so they can, they can reserve it if they want. It's not that 60 days has to, oh, this is what you have to do. No, it's for those that plan ahead. And if I wanted to reserve it 60 days prior, that's good. If it comes down to 10 days prior, it's not there, you can do 10 days. It's just that's where it starts holding the reservation. So let's not think that 60 days is the day that you have to, you know, do this. You could do 10 days as long as it's not reserved. So it's, it's kind of a benefit for those that plan ahead, like you just said.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll move on to number two. Discussion possible action by mayor and council to analyze and account distribution data for future water and sewer rates and the financial implications.
Mr. Mayor, I was asked by councilman and councilwoman to bring this back. We have had, I believe, study sessions. We've had two study sessions. I believe the first one we did right when we were doing budget study sessions for those that were here, correct? We talked about it back in that time in April. And then I believe Michael Vazquez, our fiduciary, is Michael, are you on the line here? Did he call in? Okay, so Michael is here. I just want to give you, since I was asked to bring this back, I will let you know where we're at right now with this. And thank you to Mr. Garcia, because I will bring something up that you, we have already approved, but the gas tank, the replacement gas tanks that you approved, probably even before I got here, but we were working on it. It was going to be put, replaced right near the structure of the building, which is not a good thing, to put gas tanks right next to buildings. So we are not putting it there because our previous director was just putting stuff in there. Those of you that know what I'm referring to. With that said, and correct me if I'm wrong again, in a way, my figures aren't always in my head, but it's about $140,000 less now. I remembered. All right. We're saving $140,000. We're moving the tanks and they're gonna be above ground. They're going to be pull around. The chief already looked at it. They're good for the trucks as well, correct? So we're putting in three tanks. And by the way, the tanks that we were gonna put in are now, we're not bulletproof. The tanks that we are putting in are now bulletproof. We're gonna have chains around them or gates around them. Everything will be accessible to our law enforcement. Everything's gonna be very good. It's in the same locale. You know where the basketball hoop is? That's where on the, where they play basketball, right, driving up to the sanitation? That's where it's gonna be above ground over there. And we're saving $140,000. With that said, out of that $140,000 savings, we are, again, Noe did bring a gentleman. We met, I met with him. It'll be under, I believe he said he's gonna charge us $70,000. So it'll be in my threshold to hire himself and another engineer. They're gonna do a thorough study of the city, of an inch, of our sewer and water lines, telling us all the water lines that we have, what they're made of, what they're composed of, where the shut-off points are, uh, where the pressure points are, everything to that effect. They'll take us six months to get that study. I told them we're gonna probably start in January to get this going. They agreed. With that said, I, when I called Michael Vazquez about that, Michael was very elated. He will tell you that because as he stated to you, we need a thorough study. Well, now we're gonna get a thorough study of what we have and what we need replaced. We're not basing it on what our previous director had said when we said, told us we had 40 million in unfunded water line replacements. We know we have some of it. We know we're working on it. We did get some money to replace the lines. I believe that was worked on by Juan and the previous directors over there. There are more opportunities that Noe and I are meeting with them in the next few weeks. And those will be grant funded, by the way, not just WIFA. So we are working on this. With that said, I'm giving you an update, what I am still doing, no matter what happens today, that is still going forward with the studies, with what we are doing to ensure that we get a complete understanding of what the city of Nogales is composed of. I've said it before and I said, and I said it at one of the meetings, for instance, on Stevenson Street, you go up there, that's a 1905 water line. That's above, some of it's above ground, some of it's below, created by our Camp Little soldiers. We have on Edward Street, those, we've talked about before. We don't know where some of your lines are. One of, uh, and if he was here right now, he would tell you that. But if you go onto the street right by running along Western Avenue, right on the, on this side of the wash in that neighborhood, in those neighborhoods, our sewer lines are running in their backyards. So try to replace those sewer lines now, right? There's sewer lines, water lines, everything to that effect. We tried to keep the cost down with over there. Our gas company, our Unisource helped and worked on, along with that. But there were lines there that are not even exist, were in plans. We're going to figure that out. So I'm trying to give you an update of what's going on with our sewer and water lines. By, hopefully by June, the end of June of next year, we will have a complete map of everything in the city and what we need to do. So it gives us a blueprint for what we do. I know each and every one of you have asked for that. Certainly some of you more than others, but certainly that's the direction we are taking. And that was because of a savings that we had by doing better things, by getting those tanks away from the buildings and getting better gas tanks for the city. So that is where we're at with, with what I said. I brought, Michael Vazquez is online with us today. He did present, I forgot the other gentleman's name. I will have it right here. Michael, what was the other gentleman's name that presented with you? Kevin Barnett? Yes, Kevin Burnett. Not Barnett, Burnett, presented. And I believe my numbers were low when I first presented. I'll just, I'm gonna, the numbers that were presented to you, Kevin said to get us back on track, you guys were completely like aghast, but I believe it was 106%. The minimum they suggested was 56% for water and sewer. And when I went back with the notes, if you, we raised the sewer at that, we're pretty good for the sewer rates for the next five years without having to raise that. I won't bring in sanitation rates because that is a, something that I am working on with an outside agency. I will bring that back to council. I am going to get at least an idea of what it would cost to outsource. I don't have anything in writing other than those are the words I'm going to tell you. I will bring that, because I can't make that decision. That will be up to council on what we are doing with sanitation. You know, I've already, we've already discussed in situations about sanitation. I didn't put any money into that because knowing that if we put money into it and we decided to move in that direction, we would not have gotten the money back. With that said, we're not discussing sanitation rates at this point because I am looking to discuss that meeting next two weeks with a company. I will bring that back to you, the current company that is obviously providing service right now for the city of Nogales. I brought up the, where the county is looking about with waste management, about getting transfer stations because they're going to be six years away from closing that landfill in Rio Rico. If they do transfer stations with waste management, they'll be running then the county along with the city, which only benefits all of us in this area, including Rio Rico, whoever else with, working with this company. Are there other cities? Go ahead and check. Check me if I'm wrong, but a lot of cities are doing that to the north of us. Sararita, Tucson, Pima County, they're working with waste management and such. So with that said, I bring, I wanted to bring in sanitation rates. I'm back, I went through the, all three of them. I will bring it back to what I said about water. You had the studies. We've, this is our third time we've actually talked about this. Again, it's not up to Joel Kramer. This isn't a Joel Kramer thing. Again, I don't want to be out there where I know, and I'm gonna continue saying this because I know how the politics are working, that this is Joel Kramer, city manager. He's trying to make sure this happens. It's not, I don't make the vote. I don't bring those decisions. You vote on this. I'm only bringing the information to the city of Nogales. I don't want to use this analogy and I don't want to be gloom and doom here, but I will say this. And whatever studies we have, we know we have to replace it. Michael already told you, we're not getting any WIFA money until you bring that account up. At our current rates, we will not. We are so far been good these last four months. As I tried to tell some of the gentlemen of the Port Authority, that you should be, you should be concerned. You should be very concerned about the water lines because they had a break over by some of the industrial park areas. Fixed it in five hours, four hours, four hours? What happens if it's 24 hours? Right? On a Sunday. Thank you. What happens? And we don't have the funding for it. Because I'm gonna have to tap into, what do we have in reserves? 10? 12? Yes, that's right. I saved some money. Cut the budget a little bit. What happens if we have two major breaks on a Sunday? And when's the produce season? June, July, August, whatever, right? Depends on the seasons. I'm just, and again, I'm presenting this to you because this is really, I don't want to be gloom and doom, but we need to move in a direction that we, we start moving this city. We're talking about economic development. Well, if I know there's a water line over where I want a building, it's 70 years old and I know that the city doesn't really have what they need to maybe replace it, why would I build there? Why would I put a warehouse over there then? Or a hotel? How many cases do we have with the hotel on the water line break? Many. Best western, correct? Right by Carl's Jr. That popped twice within about a month period, correct? And they had some damage. So, like, this is what we all inherited. And then we've had this study and we've, I brought this up. This, well, this is what's been going on for years. Your rate of increase is usually, I, I put it on there, 2016, 2017, 2019, but we're still, again, 56% below. I was looking at what, and I'm not throwing the county because the county can, they get their money, they get to do what they need to do. But George, you brought up about how is it gonna affect the homeowners? Well, the homeowners across three different neighborhoods, be it in Monte Carlo, being in Pererito, which is over here, correct? And Meadow Hills, they all had the same raises. They didn't raise, they assessed. They didn't raise, they assessed our home values without raising taxes. The last three years, it's gone up twenty-eight percent. What did the county do to put back into the infrastructure of the city of Nogales? How much? Nothing. See, homeowners got to understand that too is they're paying property tax, but there's nothing going back into the infrastructure. And I'm not faulting the county. That's what happened forty, fifty years ago when the city decided to alleviate themselves a property tax. But what I'm saying is that the homeowners are going to say, yes, you're raising it way too much. While your taxes on your home just went up twenty percent three years, what are you getting from that in Meadow Hills? What are you getting from the county in Meadow Hills? We as a city need to also look at protecting them. And before you know it, again, I don't want you to keep using the same analogy, but we're going to have to bring in water tanks to supply our water because our lines aren't supplying it. Are we going to have to be like Edward Street? You were there, you were there. Who else went there during the summer? You saw it. We had to take fans and we, chief, thank you for stepping up, hauling water in there for their toilets, giving them bottled water. They were out five days in June. What would that do to industrial park for five days? I, I'm not, I'm not creating fiction. I'm not anything to that. I'm creating facts of what happened since I've been here. And I'm not trying to put people out because I'm not trying to do that. This is not a Joel Kramer situation. This is the city of Nogales. And if I'm going to use my last analogy, I'll say this. We're on the Titanic and we know there's an iceberg ahead though. And if we don't do something, that iceberg is going to take us down. And that's if we don't do something about this. So it's up to you as council. I will, again, I'm just presenting all the facts and information. I'm not the, the one that makes that decision on what your sewer and water rate should be.
So Mr. Vazquez is going to do a presentation?
He was here just to, if you needed some questions or answers, excuse me, answers to any questions. Because he did present last time with Kevin. So I just brought him just in case you needed some information. We've been on the, I will say this, that we will do a presentation in January that Mr. Vazquez is working on bringing back paperwork for the council to approve and or decide, decide to, if you want to go that direction. But to give the opportunity to himself, myself, if and when the interest rates start dropping to where we, we can renegotiate whatever we have with our debt right now. And he'll bring that back to you as council in January.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So Mr. Kramer, on this item, it's a, are we going to be voting for, to analyze the account distribution data for future water sewer rates? That's the only thing we're doing?
Yes. It's whatever you decide, you feel, based on the last two presentations and what we're talking about right now, what you feel the water and sewer rates, if you think that they should be raised, whatever percentage. As I stated, to get back on track, Kevin said one hundred and six. We said minimum at least fifty percent for water and sewer. If you do fifty percent for sewer, that will be good to carry us for the next six years without raising. And Mr. Doyle, the question was too, you had brought up about the fluctuation of the sewer rates. That's also in our city, is it charter or codes? Codes, code. So you could change the code to eliminate that and just do a flat rate throughout the year. Because I remember you brought up and said, oh, we sometimes don't know what the rates are based on our water usage, but we could get rid of that and just do a flat rate for twelve months.
May I, may I say something?
Correct.
Go ahead, Mr. Doyle.
And the unfairness about that is that it's based certain, certain months of the year. And it's usually when people have, like you were talking about old lines, they have old lines in their homes, most of these homes around in Nogales, in the Nogales area are older homes. And when they have, when they have a line that breaks, especially these older homes that the water just goes right down to, to the ground. Because they have old wooden floors, they have crawl spaces. And sometimes they don't detect the leak till thousands of gallons have spilled. Then they get charged the whole year at a higher amount because, you know, they weren't able to detect that on time. And, and the thing is that that formula, I don't know who came up with it, about when they could have actually pretty much gotten an average of most of the homes and given, and, and just charge a, a certain, certain fee. But I think it's an unfair formula for most people. And it's the same thing that we had the problem in, in that area where the Viarede Water Company had its accounts, that they were getting charged a sewer fee without, on water usage, when the city had no idea how much water was being used out there. They should have, they should have done, I tried back then to create a, just a flat fee, at least for that area. And, and I think a flat fee would probably work for the whole city, just doing, you know, as far as residential areas go. But, but yeah, we need, we need to do something about that. We need to look at, give it a, another look or a closer look and, and see why they have those months when the city knows that it freezes here in Nogales. And a lot of people have broken lines that in those two months, I think it is, that, that they, that's usually when the amount of water usage goes up on them because of a broken line, and they get charged that high rate throughout the year, the coming year. Well, that's, that's unfair.
I, I can explain why water rates are based that, or sewer rates are based that way. Is because every house uses a different amount of water, so they have a different amount of impact on the sewer system. So if you charge a flat rate, you're charging certain houses more than what they normally would have been charged because they don't use a higher water rate. You could have a family of ten that would then be charged the same amount as a family of one or two, who doesn't use as much water or as much sewer. So the, the, the way that the vast majority of municipalities do their sewer rates are based off of an average of usually two to three months in the winter time, because that is when your water rate is the lowest, because you're not watering your yard, you're not doing outside activities. You, you're, you're not having, that, that's typically indicative of the water that is actually going into the sewer system as opposed to water that's being used for yards and, and for landscaping and stuff like that. So that's why they do those averages at that time of the year, because that is when your actual water usage is at the lowest. Now you can have a, a policy or a program in place to where if it is determined that somebody had a water break and was having a water leak, that that could be taken into account to then look at, you could also then use historical data if that person has lived there for ten years. And in those ten years, they've had a, a, a water bill of average water bill of X amount of dollars every January, February. But for some reason this year it was a lot higher because they had a water. Then you could have those adjustments. But that's the reason why the system is designed that way is because during those winter months is when you have the lowest usage of water and the lowest usage of water for other purposes that are outside of, of your, your typical household usage. Because if I'm irrigating my yard with water, that's not water going into the sewer system. That's not water being treated. But if I've got ten people who live in my house and we've got ten people who are flushing toilets, that's a lot more people who are using that sewer system that are causing an impact and causing water to have to be treated. So that's why those systems are set up that way.
Well, you know, just in the past, it'll be known, there was millions of gallons that the city of Nogales was paying for, treating water that was coming from Mexico that didn't pertain to the community. Yet we were paying those high rates. And, and so I'd like to do, get a breakdown on, on how much it's costing the city now that, that we, we finally got that taken care of. And, and instead of paying that exorbitant amount of twenty-some percent, we're only paying like eight percent now in, into the system of the wastewater treatment plant. So in comparison, what, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars do we spend a year? Or it's a million dollars compared to what we used to pay? And, and break it down as an average to the businesses and the homes that are, that are actually putting in whatever it is, one and a half million to three million gallons a day to get treated? Do you have the figures on that right now?
No.
One point three, that's even, wow. And before, at one point, we, we were paying, that's, that's where the three point seven million, we were paying for three point seven million, that only one point three pertaining or was, was our real cost. So we saved way over, almost three times of what we used to pay. And, and I'm talking about it in millions of gallons a day. So, so you know, when we start looking at these things, we, we need to, the figures are there. It doesn't take a long study. It doesn't take a long, you know, to research that and bring it out, can do it from one meeting to the next. But, but if we're going to be changing rates and everything else, we need to get all the information on the table, not just, you know, and, and it's, I, I, since I, since I, the last few years, I've said, I've mentioned, we, we probably need a forensic audit to make sure, you know, where the money's going. Because we're not going to make, be able to make corrections unless we know where the money goes. And, and we could probably, I know you've been doing a good job cutting costs, cutting, cutting on costs, but, but there's probably some areas that we could even do more and be more efficient. But if we don't know that there's other types of leaks aside from the water, which is in our finances, or how the money's being spent, or where it goes to, then we're really, that's the basis of everything. How much money is being generated out there and how much is misspent or, or even stolen for the, from our city? No, but, but a forensic audit will bring a lot of answers to that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Perera.
Okay, my question is this, we're talking about the water and sewer rates. It's not a very popular subject, but isn't it because we need water infrastructure, like you had mentioned about the lines, the water lines to make sure everything's new? It's not a luxury. It's something, it's a necessity for the city. So how, how are we supposed to fix all that on the streets without money, without raising rates? I don't understand.
I mean, Mr. Doyle's bringing up stuff, I'll just say, I'll deflect because I don't want to bring up stuff that, he's not wrong, but I'm not going to bring up what I've brought up before. I'll just say this, again, we, we are doing what we can, Mr. Doyle, with as far as what's being taken, what's being taken. Again, the Robin Hoods of the water just didn't happen in the last year. It just didn't happen. This has been going on, I believe some of you even know, that's been going on for thirty years. It's been going on for fifty years. You know, we have an ample supply of water, thank God. And that's where the, the, it's been taken like this, like this, like this. I'm not going to tell you more stories of what we're dealing with, but I'll tell you this, our guys that are do, involved in this have been threatened by residents of the city, by business owners of the city, because we're now following through of, oh, you're going to be charged for water now because you haven't been charged in two years. You know, again, it's, it's, if you want to keep doing studies and keep looking at it, I'm, I'm, I'll get you whatever you want. But I know this, like I said in the beginning, we've already kind of chatted about this. I can tell you that, and I can't tell you, I'm not going to say anything anymore because I've been told not to, about anything that you've addressed right now. I'll just leave it at that. I'll just say this, again, one other thing is also the fire hydrant floating meters, we do have those all accounted for. We are moving in that direction. Again, you had a company that had a floating meter that was given to them. They had in possession of it for eight years, that were doing construction business in this city, in this county, taking water from the city at no cost. That's been since twenty sixteen. That's what, nine years? Just didn't happen under Joel Kramer's watch. So again, and why I keep reiterating about Joel Kramer? Because I'm kind of going to keep saying that because of the politics, because I'm making all these changes, because that's the way we've always done it. So if that's why I want to stick to, that's why we've always done it, then let's stick to that. Again, I don't vote on it, but I'm, I will jump off this Titanic because I don't want to, I don't want to deal with it because I know what's, what's going to, what's coming ahead to us. Mr. Doyle, you're right. The sewer rates and Mr., he was exactly right. I'll say this, a lot of our neighbors have eliminated that. Our neighbors of municipalities, different groups have eliminated the usage. Everyone gets a flat fee. It makes it a lot easier for bookkeeping. It makes it easier for the city. Your water rates right now, I was going to propose also that you change your hydrant rates, usage charge, a thousand gallons, you change it up to a dollar. Because there are going to be companies that are still buying water because where are they going to go get their business from? Where are they going to buy it from then? They're still going to need it here, transportation cost. See, we've got kind of a business sense here right now, right? We can charge them that much money to start recouping some of those stuff that we've been just letting go. I'm just, I'm not disagreeing with everything you're saying. I just can't answer what you're saying. But as far as the sewer rates, I was just trying to make it easier, streamline it. Raising those, do we make a decision today? Maybe not. I can bring back and give you the specifics so you can vote on. I could easily do that for you too. But it has to be done.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Neil.
You know, this whole issue with, with the water rates, we're, we're at one hundred and six percent. Back in twenty, I want, I want to give my constituents a little history class. In twenty fifteen, there was a water rate study done. And from what I remember, I was not a councilman, but I was involved in politics. It was, it was approved that in twenty sixteen, that they would raise the water rates at one point eight or a two point oh percent for the next four or five years. However, when the city decided to pull the trigger on it, a certain council member made a motion to postpone it for a year. Well, that year became two years, three years, four years, five years, six years. And here we're, and this is where we're at right now, at one oh six. We can't afford anymore to, to kick the can down the road anymore. It's not, it's not popular. Obviously, it's a, if you want to see it in a certain manner, it's a campaign killer for anyone. But again, if we don't take care of business, then I don't think we're going to be charging our constituents any water because we're not going to be able to provide water for them. This, this should have been fixed a long time ago. Now we have to make, well, not to make, we don't have to make a decision today, but we certainly have to discuss whether it's going to be fifty, sixty percent. These are one of the hard decisions that people elected us to do. Not a popular one, but you know, I, I can go back, Mr. Kramer, and, and say, you know, construction rate, I think it's four dollars and thirty-five cents per a thousand gallons or something like that. You know, it, you know, our constituents pay a whole lot more than four dollars and thirty-five cents per thousand gallons. So we need to start the discussion today as far as what's it going to be? Fifty? Sixty percent? You know, and twenty percent down for four years, five years? But we need to get back on track. It's, it's, it's not popular. I don't want to raise the rates. You know, there's a lot of people have a fixed income. And I think we're the, correct me, Mr. Kramer, as a municipality, we are one of the cheapest when it comes to, to, as far as our water rates go. Am I correct or not? Am I correct or not?
Based on the ASU commission studies that I have, yes, we are.
So what, so we just need to, Mayor Council, we need to, we need to start the discussion because we can't put this off anymore. Data, we have enough data already. There's data back in 2015, there's data of the one we just did not too long ago. We have all the data. As far as, you know, pointing the finger at our employees and implying that the, so forensic audit needs to be done. Mr. Kramer just stated that they found most of the leaks, thank God. And, and I thank him for that because he did, he did get on that. And so there's been a few Robin Hoods, you know, regarding our water, that they've been stealing our water. But that's a discussion for another day. But I'm glad that Mr. Kramer is taking action on that. Because for many years, it was never seen into it.
Vice Mayor.
Following up on what Councilman Bonilla said, 106%. Is that the best option that we have? Or do we have other options? And I know that five years from now, it'll probably be more than 106% if we keep going in the same direction. So I think we have to move on this as soon as possible. So we can, you know, avoid any, any more damages to the water lines and the sewer lines. So, so it's going to be a necessary decision to make. It's not, you know, sometimes the residents get hit by the, by the inflation factor, and so, but so does the city, you know. We get hurt by that too. So we have to keep up with the, with our cost, with our expenses and our services. So whatever other options we have on the table, you know, we can take a look at that. And then if this has to be 106%, well, is that the final solution? So be it. Thank you.
I'd like to just add something to what Mr. Bohorkis said. And I forgot to mention right now, is that it is unfortunate because we have not raised our water rates. If we need to refinance our WIFA loans, and Mr. Vazquez has, Velazquez has pointed out, we cannot do anything without first addressing this issue. So if we need, we need WIFA money or other type of monies coming into the city, we first need to fix this issue. Because if we don't fix this, then it, then we're tied up with WIFA and all those others. And then I'd like to remind that there was like 28 projects that were not completed with WIFA. We have a huge loan. And so 28 projects were not completed with our, with our last WIFA loan. So if we don't fix this, then, you know, we're just spinning our wheels.
There's a question to me, but from Vice Mayor, I guess, correct, Vice Mayor? But I'll say this then, and what I'm hearing is, I gave you this. What I'll do is, as your city manager, I'll bring it back for next week or January. You guys decide if you want me to bring back January. But I'll give you a final proposal to vote on then. You have to decide. What was recommended from Kevin and Michael was initially, Kevin said 106% to get right to even keel. That's going to be, I know, not, but at least the minimum you're going to have to look at is 56% on both sides. Water, you're probably going to have to look at increments then of 10 to 15, probably 15 to 20% a year to get caught up. And that's going to probably be successive for the next seven or eight years. To get, because this 106% is right now, what's it going to be four years from now? And what you just said, inflation indicators are going to continue raising that. So with that said, I will bring something back specifically in concrete because it appears that I will, you guys are looking for more of a this, give us this option or this option. I will do that, make it very simplified. Certainly with the sewer rates, Mr. Doyle, I will just say we'll bring it back. I will try to get more in depth of that because I know that our neighbors out there, say Liberty, what they, what they charge, Sararita, Tubac, whatever, Tucson. We'll see, if they have that fluctuation, we can continue. It's a pain in the, it's a hemorrhoid to us as far as keeping track of it. It really is. I will say this too, your presentation in January is going to be also that you've asked me, we're, we're doing everything differently, we're changing. We are changing that too, but we are going to do it is, we're bringing in a whole new billing cycle, a whole new process for HR. It's called Work Day. It's what Pima County and City of Tucson use and other entities. It's going to recreate this whole billing cycle and make it that much easier. What you're asking for, it would be nice, I've asked for the same thing, give me those figures. I believe they were on the phone for a day trying to get this company that we have right now to give us those reports. They don't, they can't, and I was like, come on. This is ridiculously archaic. That's why we're getting rid of this company. Because I want reports, I want you guys to have the reports. You guys need to make decisions based on facts, I understand that. So certainly answering your questions, Mr. Doyle, certainly what you're saying over both of the three of you, or four of you, five of you, six of you. Each and every one of you, I know you have those questions. But I will say this, that we will work with that, we're working on that program, we'll hopefully have it. It will certainly streamline the billing because the billing still stinks. And I'm not disagreeing with you, it still is not a good thing. That company is a work of, you know what? So I will try to get as much as I can to you on what you had asked. But I would just hope that you trust this of what Michael has said, what Kevin has said, and what I've said, is, and what we've talked about in here. We keep moving forward with this because it is our pathway to improve this city and leave it in better hands three, four years down the road.
Mr. Doyle.
Just to get a better understanding of the numbers here, I guess we have a little over 6,000 water accounts on a monthly or yearly basis that get charged on a monthly basis. On a yearly basis, what does that generate? How much money are we talking about?
When I did the study at 20, or whatever, I said that first one, that I was lowballing you guys. And they said, oh no, you got to be higher. I was, it was looking at about 2 million. So if we did it this way, maybe 3 to 4 million depending on, I don't, I'd have to generate. I can give that to you.
Well, you know.
Well, how much we would generate. But again, that's roughly right now, what I was getting from was figures from skewed from last year because I didn't have any of the water meters in regulation. I didn't have a lot of the things that was going on in regulation. So it may be even more that we could be generating to get to that. Can we get up to 3, 4 million in two years? I think so, that's without any water line breaks. Because if we get water line breaks, we're going back to zero.
No, I get, fine, I see that part of it. But actually, a little more directly, I'm asking, how much money is the city generating right now on a yearly basis with the water accounts?
Last year?
Not adding the.
Last year, last year we were at 200,000 in the red.
On a yearly basis. No, 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 how much money is coming in? That's what I'm asking right now.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And then so, if we're looking at 106%, then it's going to be 6 million coming in. So we're missing roughly at 106%, about a little over 3 million. Is that what, is that about right? A year, on a yearly basis?
So to answer your question.
Somewhere we could generate 3 million from other avenues or even half of that. Then the increase doesn't have to be so high. I mean, what we're talking about here, you know, I know we're in dire straits, I realize that. And how much can we get away with raising and, and keeping the system by not giving the people a blow from one year to the next? And yet you can raise the rates to a certain degree? And what other funds do we have, Mayor? Is there anything else that possibly, that we could bring in to make a difference for, for that money that, that's needed? I mean, it's things, in other words, are we looking at all the, at all the avenues? And I, and I'd rather go like that with a lower increase this year because it gives us more time to see, you know, if we don't do another audit or forensic audit, I think with time you'll be able to detect maybe where some of that money is being, I don't know what the right word is, I'll just say misspent or, or rerouted, where it's not a benefit to the city. That's, that's what I, that's what I'm concerned with. Because if we bring more money into the city, well, guess what? More, more money is going to get rerouted if we don't find out where that money, where those routes are going to. And, and that's something that needs to be kind of investigated or looked close, closer at, and, and figure that out. Because we're just throwing money and it's not going to, and all of it is going to, for the purpose that that's in question, then we need to find, ask those questions, where is it going?
I'll say this, your question is, and it's alluding to, is there, is there a continuance of mismanagement at this point?
No, I don't know, not known, because you, you haven't been here that long to mismanage anything. Pretty much, you know, I'm not, I'm not putting any blame on you. Please, don't take it that way. What I'm saying, there has been holes in the system here that we need to find. There's been leaks, in other words. And we need to find those and find who's been responsible for those. And that, that would fall on you to take action, to plug those holes up and, and deal with the people that had anything to do with creating those, those leaks. But, but right now, again, if we look at the, at the whole nation, the way it's going, you know, from tariffs to everything, the cost of living, going to the stores and buying your groceries, your basics, you know, everything's gone up. And, and this, this, we have a lot of people here in our community that live on a limited budget. They, they're, this is more of a retirement community, believe it or not. The, we, the folks here that live down here have already raised their children, they've raised their grandchildren, and some are there ready to say goodbye to the rest of the world. But, but the thing is that, no, I mean, no, when you get to a certain age and you're in a fixed income, you know, it's, it, it, it makes it so much harder. And, and, and the pressure on them is, you know, if you, if you put another $100 a month in their budget that they have to spend, you know, they have to make all, hopefully they have family that loves them, whether it be grandchildren or kids that'll help them out. But not, not all, not all families have that love and support. But, but anyway, what I'm saying, it's not just the water that's going to go up. You know, everything's, everything's going up. And I can see that there's, that yes, we need to keep up with, with, with rate hikes and everything. But let's not slam it on them, let's think about it, you know? Let's think about it, let's start, we could start with 15% this year and look at it again next year, and we need to increase it to 20 or keep it at 15? Fine, you know, we do that. But right now, I think hitting people, you know, with a, with a high rate increase, it's, some families are going to be catastrophe, catastrophe.
I'll just, you know, you said a lot of words, but I'll just try to get through it. Again, getting money from, I don't think the bread's going to fall from the skies for the monies. Because as I went to the ASU study, again, it was ASU in Tempe, excuse me, in Phoenix and downtown, and there were, there were elected officials, the mayor's Senator Fran Galbadoan was there. There were other elected officials throughout the state. They said the same thing, there are, across the state, everyone's in the same thing. So money, they, and that's the first thing they said is, good luck trying to find the money because it's not there. So you better figure out in each of your city, what are you going to do? Just an FYI. There is no white bread coming, like I said, falling down. But there, thank you, manna, couldn't remember the word. Mr. Doyle, I understand what you're saying too about the cost and everything else. And I just want to get back to this because you've said it three times. Right now, we have done everything I can without bringing up to the public. We've made some changes. And if you're going to keep saying about this, the activities, you're saying a study, well, that makes it sound like there's things going on. Right now, I've tried to, and the team has tried to make sure we've cleaned a lot of this up. The mismanagement of what I said was going on for years, yes, there's still some of it going on. Again, it's not because of the people in this room. It's because people in the past allowed your neighbors to go ahead and do it. So those things are going on, they, we just got pictures that were shared of homes that removed the water meters. And they just hooked up meters themselves from Home Depot. There are meters that are not being read because they don't let them in. There are people, there are trucks stealing water from our hydrants. There were water meters given to people. Again, yes, all that's going on. Is it going on right now? We're cleaning that up, we're moving in that direction. Are the books cooked? No. At least I, hopefully not right now, and if they are, well, those people are going to get out of here too. But I don't want this, this discussion to be thrown out there, the innuendos of, this is what's going on, when it, it probably was, maybe it was, I know it was. But is it going on right now? I hope not. And if it is, and I miss it, well, then it's your job to get rid of me. Because then I didn't do my damn job. But I am right now spending a lot of time cleaning this up. And I don't want to sit at this table and just saying, yeah, we're missed, no, we're not mismanaging anything. And, you know, it's very difficult for some of these people that have been here, especially over here, these guys, the newer guys, that we've got a thing going. And we're trying to stop it. We just had a meeting yesterday where there's six homes, homes, six residents that are being used to shelter people because they were used in the, as a drop zones. But there's so much garbage and filth they're burning in the basements. We're doing that besides this water, we're doing all the things. So anything illegal activities are, yes, they're going on in the city, Nogales, because that's the way it's always been. Oh, that's accepted. No, it's not. But we are fighting a fight here. And the fight is also water, in a sense, to get it back. Because yes, there's thievery going on in water. We know that. There's, there's systems that were in place that we're trying to change without bringing out into the public. Because once you tell the mice where the cheese is, they run right to the cheese. Why would I disclose that? Why am I going to bring that up in a meeting? I'm not. I've got a lot of things I'm not telling everyone because I'm not going to. Because I know Nogales, I've been here since 89, Mr. Mayor. I know it. The one thing about Nogales is, you don't tell your secrets.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Doyle.
Again, I, what I'm trying, where I'm trying to go with this, Mr. Kramer, is basically, we talked about a three, that the city needs a 3 million a year to, you know, bam, 106%. But, but now, if we go on a percentage basis, we're talking about, you know, at 15%, it would be less than half a million a year that the city would need to, to be able to make, to keep, to keep the system going. Now, we, I guess, we can fine tune it, but, you know, you know, I remember, I think it was last year, that I noticed that there was a, a few produce houses, I think belonged to the same person, that were, that they weren't, there was over a quarter million, a quarter million dollars that we weren't charging them until it was brought to your attention. But it was still a cost, see? But see, that's, that's money that the city was losing, that wasn't bringing into the city coffers. And, and we're now, we're talking about half a million dollars to carry this program on. If we do like a 15%, we can even do a 20%. But that, what I'm saying is, there's money that's not coming into the system that we need to bring in. And so that we won't make it a burden to the people. Yes, we can increase it, but we don't have to.
That much.
No, be suffocating to death or whatever, you know?
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I want to go back to Mr. Councilman Doyle's comment on the, on the community being on a fixed income, a lot of families, and it's true. But I think the city should start educating the people on not to waste water, maybe sending flyers in the, in. flyers in the bill on how to save water, and that, you know, that's going to save them from paying a big bill. And I, I think there's, in the community and the county and the state, there's other entities that subsidize low-income families and elderly families to pay their bills. I don't know if the water bill is subsidized by any entity for the seniors and for the low income. So I think the ones that get the full blunt of it is the middle class, the ones that don't have any, any subsidies or assistance from anybody. So I don't think that would be the best excuse not to fix this issue.
I have a question, Mayor.
Mr. Parof.
It was mentioned by Mr. Kramer, 106%, it's not set in stone. We still have room to negotiate to less than that. It's not going to be 106. I wouldn't go for that. But we have to come to a compromise. It's, this issue is not popular, like we stated before, but we have to do something. And I'm behind Mr. Kramer 100% because I'm not in the mentality of, this is the way it's always been. We need to move forward with no gals. And there's issues such as this that are not very popular, but we have to take initiative. We're not going to, I'm not passing the buck to the next administration. And I want that on record.
Go ahead, Mr. Rooney.
Mayor and council, I think that we're forgetting one thing, and it's something that, you know, the comments that Mr. Doyle has made, you know, and that's a big concern for these people that live on a fixed income. However, the state, Mr. Kramer, correct me if I am wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, the state requires that every municipality, when it comes to an enterprise fund, that it pays for itself. So what we are currently charging our base, or six, I think it's 6,000 accounts, Mr. Doyle, it's not pay, it's not, it's not, we are not making our enterprise funds, which is the water, which is to pay for itself. And I think that even before we make these decisions with our heart, we need to first pay attention if we are in compliance with the state, as far as that the enterprise funds are being, are being met. Because I think you said $2 million brought in with those 6,000 accounts, Mr. Kramer, but I think we're outspending, we are, so it's kind of irrelevant, we have $2 million coming in, but at the end of the year, we are outspending those, that money. So it, right now, what's coming in with those 6,000, 6,000 accounts, and if we get like $2 million before you stepped out, that's what I heard, it's sort of irrelevant because we are spending the money faster than what we are, we are receiving. So 2 million may seem like a lot of money, but in reality, we haven't raised rates since 2015. And COVID hit, inflation hit, and all that time. And so we need to first, I guess if anything we're going to discuss is, is our, is our enterprise fund paying for itself? Before we even make a decision of 15 or 20 or 30%, you know, we, I think that's why we need to pay attention also.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Doyle.
Again, what I'm, what I'm talking about is the percentage of the rate increase. To hit, hit it right off the bat, when we can, in four years, maybe, like, I think you had mentioned it, Mr. Kramer, of doing a gradual increase every year. At 25% in four years, you're, you're up there with the full amount. But it doesn't, it doesn't hit the people as hard as boom, coming with a hundred plus percent on it. So the other thing, the reason I brought the other question is, on, on the difference between the 3 million that's needed on a yearly basis with, with the rate increase is, I was asking whether there was any other kind of funding that could help give some assistance to the difference while we get to that point of, of getting the, the rate increase to where it's going to be paying for those, for those expenditures that we're trying to cover.
Mr. Kramer, I have a.
Go ahead.
Do we have any, do we have any discounts for low income or with the city as far as, so we can maybe offset for what Mr. Doyle is, is discussing right now?
Right now, it's 30% for low income. However, if we raise the rates, it's still going to raise on them. So the 30%, whatever they're paying, it's still going to raise the, whatever you decide to raise. It'd still be in place, you know, but it is 30% right now. And Mr. Doyle, going back, I'm not trying to argue, I just, I'm just trying to say is, yes, we are looking, we are, we're looking at funding. I mean, funding is there. Yes, it's 3.3 million we brought in, that's why I said, what we were bringing in 3 million, my figures, when I first presented, was 2 million, and that was at 30% increase when I first presented. Kevin and Mike, Michael brought in, they said this is what the percentage is. I believe they said if you raise it at least 56%, that would get it up to 4 to 5 million. Besides the 3.2 million we're bringing in, so now you're looking at bringing in 8 million. Does that mean that we're going to spend all of 8 million? No, maybe then that's when we start putting into the reserves, and that's when we build it up. So in two years, we can look at refinancing and getting more of that whiffle money to start moving forward. I only am saying this too is, because the bigger picture of it is, because you're saying we have an aging community, and yes, we do, and everything, but I don't want to, I don't want to put that aging community at risk, because what's the percentage of them that depend on swamp coolers? What's the dependence on drinking, drinking from the tap? Drinking from the tap? Are, is the water coming through the pipes to their homes? Is it being filtered? I mean, think of the health precautions here too. Think of the other avenues that, can you put a price on your aunt that's 75 years old, that has health issues? She's drinking out of the tap water? I'm not saying that it's that across the city, but I'm just alluding that there are pipes out there that we probably have to look at replacing too. And that's why I think Mr. Estes, I forgot your name, Joe. Mr. Estes and I met with the attorneys from New Orleans, correct? And we brought that, and they're going to do a study of that too. So we're going to know of what's in our systems. But there you go. I mean, all of that is, but what price do you put on that? Is there a price on that? There's a bigger picture to all this. And again, I'm looking at here, and I'm looking at one business committee, thank you for coming in, by the way, that, you know, the businesses also are looking at this, and I'm, and I'm saying this again, not just at the produce, but just anything business is coming in. If they know the infrastructure's going, or what happens when we can't fix that? And all of a sudden, five or six of the producers said, to help with this, we're leaving, because this is costing us too much, and you guys have nothing in place. It goes the other way then, doesn't it? I'm not trying to be, I'm just playing the devil's advocate here, is we need to look at all the, all the parameters of it. But I think health, I think persons knowing that they're getting it, again, the Edwards Street should be a perfect example of why we need to do this. Because what's Edwards next? What's the next street? The rest of downtown, we could go across, right? So I'm, this isn't a joke, again, I hope, please don't put this, me as, I'm your city manager, I'm only providing all this information, I'm not trying to sway you, but I'm just trying to tell you is, whoever said it, your next administration or your next city manager, because there is going to be somebody that comes after me, I understand that completely, sooner than later for some of you. But it is what it is. And you'd really need to think of that. I'm not asking for 106%. If you're going to ask my opinion, what do you want, what I think you should do? I think you should take Michael Vazquez's opinion and state, at least the minimum was And that's what I will go, because of what Michael said. I'm trusting what he said to you guys, and that's why I wanted him here, so he could hear what I had to say. And same with the sewer. Because the water lines and sewer lines run concurrently together, and we know sewer lines are in people's backyards. So that's going to be a question of what do we do on that one. But that's my opinion. Mr. Doyle, again, I, I hear you, we are doing everything we can to fix all the theft and all that. And I know you're not throwing it at me, and I understand that, but I'm just, I don't want to keep going down this path of that, because we are making amends to it. We are doing what we can do. We are trying to make sure that everyone is playing by the same value of fairness. The question I have, Mr. Kramer, doesn't go along that line anymore, I think we've discussed that enough. It's on the recommendation that you're basing out from Mr.
Mr. Vazquez.
Vazquez. Is now, so if we increase it, whatever it be, 50 or 56% today, is there going to be another rate increase in the next couple of years?
I would say then you do a yearly increment, and we'll figure it out.
For how many years?
You get caught up to where we should be at the flat rate. Right now, we should be at 106%.
Yeah, no, but it was okay. So you raised it this time.
If we do 50.
Fifty percent.
Okay, 50%.
And so, so next year, now you're, you're going, the 50% is added to next year, and now you're doing 50% of the total?
Then you just raise it another 15% of what you just raised, and then you raise it another 15% of what you just raised, until you hit that, until you hit that point of going, you know what, city residents, it took us four years, but we got there. You know what, city residents, we're at a good level. You know what, city residents, we got 10 million in the water accounts. You know what, city residents, we can get out and get those whiffle loans for 40 million. You know what, residents of Edwards Street, we're going to get your water lines replaced.
You mean they haven't been replaced yet?
We're working on that. That's part of our plan, correct?
It's not that expensive to get.
No, we've got, we'll be bringing that to you in January as well. You're going to hear some good stuff. There's more, there's some good, trust me, there's some good sides of this. It's not gloom and doom, the whole thing, but we are looking at that. So to answer your question, that would be my recommendation, based on what Michael and Kevin stated to you on that meeting date, from whenever it was, I don't remember, in June, in June, it was June's meeting. So I've said enough, I've, way, way overboard.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I just want to make a comment on your, on your, on your comment about the drinking water. A lot of, a lot of the people in the community buy water, the cases of water to drink, you know, they just use the water for cooking and bathing and stuff like that. And about two years ago, the case of water was like $3. Now you go buy a case of water, it's like $6, $7.
No, $3.99.
Well.
And for 40 bottles.
They raised the price on that, and nobody says anything.
Or wall, or.
Right.
Or sandflakes.
So, so it's a necessity, and I think we, we need it.
And who says that we don't get these water lines fixed in four years or five years, that the water, and they're tested and they're great, and we can let everybody know, no more buying bottled water, because your water lines are that good? Because our wells right now are, are really good, as opposed to our neighbors to the north. So, again, we don't have to make any decision, but as a council, what I'm gathering is, you want me to bring something more in firm, more in concrete, so you can make that decision? I will do that. Actually, our next meeting is next Wednesday, so I can certainly bring that to you, and you guys can decide then. Or if you want to wait till January, I can do that in January.
Keep it in January. Now, you know, I concur with, you know, what everybody's talking, I think, you know, we got to get everything, you know, in front of us, you know, the plan, the infrastructure, what we need to come out with, and you guys are very bad at math. If we do 50% the first year, and then 50% from the, from the past year, from after that, that's 75%. That's not 50%.
Yeah.
So it's got to, it's got to be 50 and 50?
50, and then 15, I was saying.
Oh, 15, okay.
I would say 15.
Okay, okay.
I didn't say 50, no.
You say we misunderstood.
15, 15s. So you'd have, in four years, you would have 60, where you would be at 110, where you would want to be, and that's why I said four years from now, you can say it.
But still, if you do 15, if you do 15, and the next year you do another 15, it's like doing, you know, 22.5. It's not 15. Because you're, that 15% that you went up, the next year, that, that amount is already added to, to your, to your tier.
So do we do like 50 this time, and then take another look where, how high we should go, or?
Yes.
Next year, or?
What I'll do is, I'll get, he's on board, I'll get him to give the present, the creative for you, so that way you have it. And I'll start it at 50%, and we'll go from there for your meeting.
So that's 5-0?
Yes.
Okay.
Initial 5-0.
That's where you started right there, that's, that's where I went.
All right.
But, you know, we got to get, you know, the, the numbers, you know, the meters, the infrastructure assessments and all that, what, what were we losing from all the details?
I'm not going to get you information from what's happened in 40 years in a year. I'm getting it right now, which is going to take us at least two more years. So if you want to wait two more years, I'll give it to you.
But what were we not recovering from exacounts that weren't being?
Recovering that you had floating meters that, when I first asked the question with our new Public Works Director, how many floating meters were there? The answer was, I'm not sure. Not from over here, but from people that are no longer here. Where were they purchased from? I'm not sure. How many did you purchase and when? I'm not sure, who has them, I'm not sure. Right now, we have them locked up, correct? And the fire department is overseeing that. Right. So they are, there's a process now in place, where they're not just giving it to them, they're going through the business office, working with the fire department and Public Works. So there's three entities, four entities would be our safety officer as well, who's also involved in this. So there is a process in place, Mr. Mayor, I'm just telling you, I've changed the process. We've got people that didn't want to give up their floating meters. We've got those back. We think we've got all the floating meters under control. Our next phase is, we just ordered the $200,000 that you allocated to start locking all the fire hydrants. So I'm saying that publicly, because they're going to see it. And we're going to tag them, and we're going to ensure that we put a label on there that theft of water is a Class 1 misdemeanor on the fire hydrant itself. So our police department will be able to actually, if they see them stealing, there it is, tagged, okay, cite them. So we are moving in that direction. I don't have a money figure, because I don't think I'll ever get that. Because God knows, water is untraceable. You don't know. We know that there were people from ranches going to fire hydrants and taking water. So we know people were right on Perkins Street. In big, in big trucks, not, in big, 1,000 gallon trucks. Again, Mayor, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just telling you, we're, we're moving in that direction to it. But it doesn't, it should not stop you as a council to keep moving forward with this. If you got to trust the system that's, we've changed, that we're putting in place, trust that system. And I'm not trying to lie or make smoke and mirrors here, I'm trying to tell you, we're holding people accountable. So with that said, that's our avenue. Your avenue is to approve what is being requested, to keep that funding going, so Public Works and our Port Authority, our Chamber of Commerce can attract the businesses to this community, because they can say, there's a good infrastructure in place. That's part of bringing business too. It's not just the smiles that we put on and the friendly neighbor attitudes, they're going to want to know is the infrastructure in place, besides good schools, things that, all that. But is the infrastructure in place? Look what the council just did, they passed it, they're raising rates. They really did their history, they'd say, oh wow, they're moving in that direction. That's economic development too. So I'm just trying to tell you, Mayor, Council, the honesty, the things that we're doing, we got it in place. We are moving in that direction. And thanks to these two gentlemen and a couple gentlemen over here, we are moving in that direction. And your meter readers. And your meter readers are in place, we're doing that, we're making sure of it. We've got code enforcement officers out there on the other end of it. So we are out on the enforcing what hasn't been enforced because that's the way we've always done it. Attitude is not in play anymore. So I trust that you will, I'll bring that back. I could even bring it back next week, which I probably will because I know Michael's listening and we can get something gathered and I can get it on the agenda for next Wednesday, which I probably will. So I know, I know we've, we've, because right now, January? All right.
You don't mind if we follow the saying of our former President Reagan, said, trust but verify?
If you haven't verified with me yet, Mr. Doyle? I am trusting the people I have in place. And we're verifying.
And Mr. Kramer, the reason I, I think Mayor and Council wants to do it in January, we want to have a little bit of time to see these, these proposals, like just, because it's, it'll be what, we'll have a few days to, you know, to see all this and make a decision. So we'll just, we can, we can do it on, on January, we have more.
That's fine, I'm not gonna try to rush you guys, I understand, no worries. I'll get it to you when we get it in January then. We're gonna have January, so just enjoy your next council meeting because it's gonna be a short one. Your January one's gonna be a long one, so there you go.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Any more discussion? We'll move on to orders. One, consideration possible action of order twenty twenty-five dash eleven dash zero thirty-eight in order of the City Council of the City of Nogales approving professional service agreement with the Nogales Santa Cruz County Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just like to know, on, on the service, professional service agreement, is there a certain time of the year that's supposed to be presented from the?
We've, we've got that in order now, Mr., we were gonna do it on, we've got both contracts, because both, both organizations had different contracts. I worked with the Port Authority and with the Chamber of Commerce. We reworded some of their contracts and we put it on there to where now it's just gonna be a renewable. It will just continue to be a renewable for both entities. We'll bring it back, but you still approve it. But with the dates are for January to January, I believe, or December to January, whatever it was at the last presentation, because these were supposed to be on the last agenda in November.
So can the council, or at least myself, get a copy of the new contract?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, Mr. Essis has it.
For both. Thank you, Mr., you're on the spot now.
And it is, Mr. Doyle, you can get a copy because it's right there in your package.
They're right here?
Yep.
Oh, thank.
Yes.
Okay, it's all there, huh?
Yes.
There you go, see?
So both entities, I gave both, again, I'm trying to work with both entities, both of our organizations that we contribute. I gave them an opportunity to tweak it, what they saw, how it fit their needs to the city. I agreed, Mr. Essis agreed, so both entities were given that opportunity. So we're trying to work with both entities to work with, for the city as well. I didn't want to speak just on the chamber because it also with the port as well.
Any other questions? All in favor? All right, all opposed? Motion passes. Number two, consideration possible action on order twenty twenty-five dash eleven dash zero thirty-nine in order of the City Council of City of Nogales approving a professional service agreement with the Greater Nogales Santa Cruz County Port Authorities. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, all opposed? Motion passes. Number three, consideration possible action of order twenty twenty-five dash eleven dash zero four zero in order of the Council of the City of Nogales approving the, excuse me, an agreement for construction service for the renovation of the Nogales Administrative Services Building with McKinstry and Sancho LLC. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I just do want to say that, thank you for taking the lead on this, Mr. Kramer. That is part of the future of the City of Nogales, expanding our complex and making it more comfortable for all the offices of our employees here to have that room and space. I think with this finished, now we'll, we'll have not only the office space, but we have not only an extension for our city park, but we also have a lot more parking. So thank you for, for bringing those, those qualities of life to our employees that, that'll make it easier and more comfortable for them to do their work.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle, and it certainly will be good for the community because the drive-throughs are gonna be so much better for everyone, especially those that just want to go through. That's gonna be a good, it's gonna be so much better. The HR department is going to be a lot more discreet because people that have concerns with HR will be able to be HR offices. The police department is going to be adjoined here. We're moving Mr. Tapia's group from Public Works right over to this side as well. So when new businesses come in, it's gonna be a better, again, for the community development component of it. And they'll be right here, so all three of us will be right here. I'll give an explanation to you in January about that and further because it also includes on what we're doing with Workday. So the community development component will be with that. But certainly, thank you for bringing that up. It's important and it's, it's gonna be hopefully by, I think he said what, June, May? So thank you, and thank you, Council.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I want to echo the same words that Mr. Doyle said. And also, that building's been sitting there for years, riding away, you know? It's about time that we put it to good use. Thank you for following through and focusing on, on bringing that building back to life.
Thank you.
Not just the building, but also the construction people, McKinstry, they're, they're a great construction company. The people are really going, following through on, in everything they've put down in writing.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, and they, Mr. Doyle, you weren't here at the presentation, but they did say they're gonna try. I think they said, I'm putting in at least a million dollars spending into this community for the construction types and whatever they can do working with other subcontractors as well. So they're, they're doing their efforts to try to put back into the community as well. So thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you all, really, again.
Got one question, Joe, and it was asked to me a couple of weeks ago. What were these, was this renovation open to, to offers of?
We used the, we used the state contracts. We followed the state contracted policies.
Okay. Did we get enough bids or?
Well, when you follow state contract, you can just go with that company.
Was that, why would, did we go that way? Or was it specifically reason that we went that direction and not opened it up to?
Because I was following, as I explained from the last couple of meetings, various times, at different meetings, there was Vergey, there was Schneider, and this company that do this volume of work for entities, be it government entities, school districts. So I went with this company because I found, Vergey didn't reach back to me and Schneider I didn't like because of what they did in Sierra Vista, and that's why I went with McKinstry of their efforts. Obviously, we found their efforts. But on large-scale operations like this, other entities, again, municipalities use companies like this. They just use and follow the state procurement protocol.
Okay, thank you.
So, but again, when you're asking, and certainly that was asked, that's a good point, Mayor, because the Chamber of Commerce also was approached by different companies. And I believe they, they stated to those companies, there's gonna be further work and they are looking to get subcontractors involved in some of their work as well. So they're still, it's just not, it's just they're the management company and they are under state contract. So, and you, as a council, voted to move this in a direction which we'll bring up in January again with the roads. I don't want to divert too much, but the threshold opens up next week, the eighth of December. So you raised it from one million to five million. So we'll be able to do a lot more of following this protocol. Certainly, an efficient process.
Go ahead, Mr. Doyle.
I just want to also mention, so that maybe people in the community that aren't aware, that this project is, is really a real blessing for the whole community. Because when we, when we purchased it, it was under my administration and the one that really helped me stand firm for that was Councilman Parada, Mrs. Parada's dad. He was seeking to try to get a depart, a new PD so they could offer. But, but this presented itself and we brought it down from about a million and a half, I think, down to a little over half a million. So, so that's, that was a cost to the city. But not, not only did we get the building as a real blessing to kind of give PD more space down here and, and every other department, like you mentioned. But, but we got, there was a parking that PD needed and, and our fire department, and we have that there for, for the use of that. But we added that other piece of property for the city park to extend the, the park. I think it was like three and a half acres that we got here in the heart of town with the purchase of the building and, and the land for a little over half a million dollars. So, you know, that's the hard thing to find here in this community is land to build and especially at a decent price. But most of all, that it adjoined the city complex at the time. So that's why now we can go all the way up to Denny's and the gas station here and it, and it's all city property. And, and what you're doing with it is gonna really increase the value of everything. Thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. That's it, all in favor? All right, all opposed? Motion passes. Next, we move to executive session. All in favor? All right, all opposed?
Thank you. We convene back from executive session. Now, next item will...
Motion to adjourn executive session.
Yeah. So we motion to adjourn executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Give me a second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So we're back and now we're going to go... Next item will be terminated and we move to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you. Have a very happy time.